Good morning, Mr. Shamley.
Morning, Chairman.
The wing guard and staff, the different leadership that are represented here, all of the visitors, want to welcome you to the series of meetings that we usually have twice a month as a board. It's always good to have you here. How we usually proceed, I usually explain at the beginning of each meeting is we go ahead and open up with the Pledge of Allegiance, and then from there we go on to have a prayer, and then we go into the series of meetings that is before the board. Again, I just want to welcome everybody, and it's good to have all of you here. So with that, without further ado, let's go ahead and have the pledge. Diana Morgan will lead us in the pledge, and Jeff Udall will lead us in the prayer.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our dear heavenly Father, we're grateful to meet here today. We're grateful for the purpose of meeting, thankful for this great county from the northern border with Utah, clear south of Alpine. We pray for the citizens within our county, that they'll be watched over and protected, and that we can do what we can to help them. We're grateful for our elected leaders and the time and effort they spend in our behalf, and pray for their well-being and thy inspiration to help them in their deliberations in making decisions. Please help us all to be appreciative of our liberties and the good things that we enjoy, and that we might all do our part to help this county prosper and move forward. We pray for these things in the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Morgan, Mr. Udall, for the pledge and for the prayer. Okay, I understand our colleague, Mr. Shepherd, is probably still on his way. He should be here shortly, and so is our county, Deputy County Attorney, Mr. Joe Young. He should be on his way too, and probably be here shortly. So with that, let's go ahead and call the Public Health Services District Meeting to Order at this time. Looks like we have a couple of items on the agenda. Item number one, sir.
Good morning, Mr. Shirley, Mr. Shamley.
Morning.
The Apache County Public Health Services District requests discussion and possible approval of a contract with Dr. Scott Hamblin for public health medical consultation, alternative medical examiner services effective April 1st, 2017. This has been budgeted for in the FY 1718 budget. We do have a contract with Dr. Hamblin, it was a one-year contract, and this contract is for four years, renewable annually.
Okay, Mr. Shamley, what's?
I make a motion we approve, Chairman.
Okay, go ahead and second the motion. Are there any questions or discussion? Hearing, non-all those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Aye, two in favor, none opposing, so with that, the item passes. Item number two, sir.
We request your discussion and possible approval of IGA, numbered ADHS 14-053047, Women, Infants, and Children WIC, Breastfeeding Peer Counseling, and Farmers Nutrition, Farmers Market Nutrition Program Services, Amendment Number Five, reducing the WIC price sheet from $102,006 to $94,413, and this reduction is due to a reduction in caseload. It's not only happened in Apache County, but it's been statewide where WIC numbers are greatly reduced from what they have been in the past. As a health department, we just participate in the WIC portion of this contract, and that's what the funding is for.
Okay, sir.
I make a motion we approve.
Okay, I'll go ahead and second that motion. Questions, discussion? Hearing, non-all those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Aye, two in favor, none opposing, the item here by passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. With that, the Chair will entertain a motion to adjourn this particular meeting.
I make a motion we adjourn.
Go ahead and second that, all those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Aye. With that, the Health Services District Meeting is hereby adjourned. Okay, let's go ahead and call the counties' Library District Meeting to Order. We do have three items on the agenda. Item number one.
Good morning, Dr. Shirley.
Good morning.
Hello.
Discussion and possible approval of a lease agreement between the Greer Community Facilities Association and the Apache County Library District from July 1st, 2017 through June 30th, 2018, at the rate of $814.34 per month.
Shamley.
I just had a question, Chairman. I make a motion that we approve.
Okay, motion to approve the particular item as presented. Mr. Shamley, question?
What exactly is this, the amount for, $814 with Greer?
They allow us to use part of that building.
That, that north, yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
And it includes heat, all electricity, water, sewer, all of them.
Thank you.
Okay, did we make a second?
I'm, I'm sorry, I was on, I was connecting.
Well, I'll go ahead and second, 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 second time.
Aye.
Okay, motion in a second to approve the particular item as presented. I guess there's no more questions or discussions, so with that, all those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay, it's two in favor, none opposing, so with that, the item is hereby passes. Okay, item, I see our colleague, Mr. Shepherd, has just walked in, so let's go ahead and have him take his seat first before we go on to the next item. Okay, good to see you, sir. Yeah, we heard you were coming, but it was at the appointed time, so we've gone ahead and got started. So we're on item, we're on the Health Library District Meeting, and we're on item number two, sir. So with that, go ahead and proceed, item number two.
Discussion and possible approval of a lease agreement between Apache County Library District and the Vernon Domestic Water Improvement District from July 1st, 2017 to June 30th, 2018, at the rate of $25 per month.
Okay, gentlemen?
I make a motion we approve.
Second.
Okay, motion in a second to approve the particular item as presented. Are there any questions or discussion? Okay, hearing, non-all those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Aye, it's unanimous, we'll go ahead and do that. Mr. Whiting, I understand you're on the line.
Yes, Mr. Supervisor, this is Michael Whiting.
Oh, okay, just wanted to know. Good morning, sir.
Good morning.
Okay, item number three, gentlemen, number three.
Discussion and possible approval of a lease agreement between Apache County Library District and the Vernon Community Park Committee from July 1st, 2017 to June 30th, 2018, at the rate of $25 per month.
I make a motion we approve, Chairman.
Motion to approve the particular item?
Second question.
Okay, motion, second, to approve the particular item as presented. Question, Mr. Shepherd?
Thank you. I know there's a couple of lease agreements between the county and the district and towns here. Is it possible to get a copy of your lease agreement, what it entails?
It should have been included with the packet.
Okay.
But yes, we'll make sure you have one if you do not.
Okay.
No problem.
Thank you.
Okay, I don't know if there are any other questions, discussion? Hearing, non-all those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Aye, it's unanimous, we'll go ahead and do that. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Chair will entertain a motion to adjourn the Library District Meeting.
I make a motion we adjourn.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Aye, it's unanimous, we'll go ahead and do that. So with that, the Library District Meeting is hereby adjourned. Okay, with that, gentlemen, the Chair will go ahead and call the counties' Board of Supervisors Meeting to Order at this time. We do have several items to address. So with that, we'll go ahead and give the time to Mr. Chris Bagnoli, item number one.
Good morning.
Morning, sir.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, thanks for having us. I'm Paul Greer with the Arizona Game and Fish Department, representing the department today to give the board an update on the Mexican Wolf Project. Also present today in attendance with the Arizona Game and Fish Department is Jim DeBos, Assistant Director for the Wildlife Management Division, Chris Spagnoli, Pine Top Regional Supervisor, Jim Zeiler from the Arizona Game and Fish Commission is also present, and from the Fish and Wildlife Service, John Oakley, the Field Projects Coordinator. They would be available to answer and help field questions if you have those and you'd wish. Just a background, on myself, I've been in this project as the inter-agency field team leader for Arizona Game and Fish for a year now. I was a wildlife manager before that, in Units 3A and 3C in Region 1. So I'm learning as I go, but if there's some questions that I can't answer, I'm going to defer to the experience behind me. We'll get started. The inter-agency field team, just to give those of you a background on that, that may not have heard that before, it is composed of five different agencies that are involved with the day-to-day implementation of recovery and management of the Mexican Wolf reintroduction project. It's composed of the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service, which is the lead agency, the Arizona Game and Fish Department, obviously, we've been a partner in the program for the last 19 years, since the first releases of wolves, as well as prior to 1998 with the planning of the project. Also, part of the inter-agency field team is the White Mountain Apache Tribe, the U.S. Forest Service, and USDA Wildlife Services. And staff from each of the agencies is assigned to the inter-agency field team. As far as the Arizona Game and Fish Department's portion of the inter-agency field team, we've got three priorities that guide largely what we do, and you can read those there. The first is to monitor the wolf population and document the expansion of the wolves. To be responsible managers, to be able to manage effectively the wolves on the ground and see the reintroduction efforts through, it's critical for us to be able to monitor the wolves that we have and then document that expansion. The second priority is to conduct an end-of-year count, and I'll talk more to you about that today, how we go through that, but that's involved with some ground efforts, as well as accumulated by a helicopter aerial survey in late January, early February. And then third is to mitigate the wolf impacts to the livestock producers through proactive management and information dissemination. Our department feels that we've been the, we've tried to be a steadfast voice in this reintroduction project that emphasizes the legal mandate for recovery, balanced with the concerns of those who make their livelihood and live in rural Arizona. So, starting off, just to give you a snapshot of what we do, I'll go through the year briefly, try to be quick. I'm assuming you'll have some questions, if you'd like to ask those as we go through, I'd be open to that, otherwise we couldn't have questions at the end. But starting out with January, February.
Do you like to stay connected? Yes, he's here now.
That largely is based around our end-of-the-year helicopter count and capture operations. That's twofold what we're doing on that operation. Number one is to have the helicopter with the biologist doing an actual physical observation survey count of all of the different packs. We'll use the working collars to fly, and we'll count the uncollared animals with the collared animals, and that gives us our best ability to put eyes on the different wolves in Arizona and New Mexico. And then the second portion of that is to be able to take that opportunity to capture animals that are on our priority list. So basically, our collaring priorities are to have a working GPS collar on the alphas, the breeding male and female in each pack, as well as two pups in each of the packs. And we've also got cross-fostering efforts that we'll talk about in a little bit. Those animals is our priority for us to get working collars on, so we can document their Here's a chart that shows the minimum counts since the reintroduction in 1998. I put numbers there on the last three years. Our end-of-the-year count for 2016 is the most recent figure that we'll have now, that we'll operate from, and that minimum count was 113 wolves at the end of the year in 2016, and that's both in Arizona and in New Mexico. When we say a minimum count, we recognize that there are likely other animals in the landscape that we didn't count, that didn't go into that, but those are 113 wolves that we could document through observations combined with the helicopter survey to say that those animals were alive at the end of 2016. And you can clearly see from that chart that the population is increasing. Just a little bit about the wolf population in Arizona. There's 24 packs currently in both states, 13 packs are in Arizona. A typical wolf pack size is two wolves to six wolves, you can see upwards of eight, the largest, I believe that we've documented is 12. That would be a rarity, two to six is about the typical size. The packs will occupy a territory, which is on average about 200 square miles. The distribution of the packs in Arizona, just roughly speaking, would be south of Vernon on the Apache Sitgrees National Forest, up onto the state private land in the wintertime, but then from the forest east of the state line, south on the forest down, roughly generally speaking, to about the Mogollon Rim, just below the Mogollon Rim. That's the current occupied area where our packs are at, obviously on the White Mountain Apache Reservation as well. Documenting dispersals, I mentioned that in our key priorities. Two noteworthy dispersals that were documented in 2016, these were both single wolves. One was documented in the Clay Springs area in May of 2016, that was a single uncollared animal, and then another animal that was also single and uncollared was documented through a photograph taken in the OW Ranch area, which is just south, just below the Mogollon Rim, north of Young, relatively speaking. It's important to note to the board that our Game and Fish Department has dedicated for the last two years a wolf biologist that was responsible for the area west of Cholo, largely to get out and conduct uncollared sign search, use remote trail cameras to be able to document wolves, follow up and investigate sightings and reports of wolves in those areas, and we've done extensive efforts through that biologist for the last two years to be able to document expansion of wolves into the area to the west of Cholo. Those are the two animals that were documented in 2016. But moving on into the calendar year, as far as what the Arizona Game and Fish biologist assigned to the inter-agency field team will do, and this is in cooperation with the other partner biologist on the IFT, February and March is the winter predation study period. And basically, what that is, is biologists using GPS collar data from wolves to go out and investigate what we call clusters, which would be representative of possible kill sites where there'd been a kill. And this is to obtain data that will help us to document and monitor wolf impacts on ungulate populations, so on our deer and elk populations specifically in Arizona. We've been doing this for the last two years, our IFT will continue to do this. This is important data for us to have. Some of the figures, the figures will change, some of the figures I'll share with you today would be that 92% of the kills investigated were elk, so our Mexican wolves are largely killing elk as far as a prey base. Of those elk kills, 51% were calves born that year, and 8%, the remaining 8% were deer Our department recognizes that being able to document and monitor wolf impacts on deer and elk populations are important to the state of Arizona, it's important to our department, and as part of being responsible wildlife managers, this information is important to us. We'll continue to document wolf kills and study their effects on the populations. April and May is the breeding season for wolves. I'll mention here and then talk a little bit more about the types of releases and translocations. One of the types of initial release is called cross-fostering, and what that is, is that's taking very young pups from captivity, less than 14 days old. These animals are from captivity, they're more genetically diverse, taking those animals and placing them, fostering them into a wild wolf den, so that they are raised wild and would grow up behaving like wild wolves. This is the only initial release that the Arizona Game and Fish Commission is permitting in Arizona. The other initial release would be a release of adult wolves raised in captivity. In 2015, the Arizona Game and Fish Commission directed the Arizona Game and Fish Department to no longer release adult wolves raised in captivity, due to concerns that adult wolves raised in captivity bring, being that they are naive, they are raised around humans, despite the best attempts of those that would raise wolves in captivity. And so our department has recognized that a release of adult wolves from captivity have been largely inefficient in recovering the population and as far as building social tolerance of the program as well. So in Arizona, the only release that the Arizona Game and Fish Commission is authorizing that we will do is this cross-fostering. In 2017, we did one cross-foster event in May of two pups from captivity into the Panther Creek Pack south of Alpine in the Middle Mountain area, and that, those efforts were coordinated through the Fish and Wildlife Service to the permatese in the area, as well as to the county and local stakeholders. Moving forward, then I'll come back to releases and translocations again. June and July is a busy time of the year for us, that finds our biologist. June 1st is really when a lot of the cattle come onto the Apache Sitgrees National Forest, and so we have been, as the IFT, we've been working with the permatese prior to that point. We have tried to meet with the permatese through their annual AOI meetings with the Forest Service to be able to discuss wolf locations, their concerns, make ourselves available to them, as far as trying to be, working collaboratively to head off the conflict that we could potentially have once livestock are brought onto the forest. During June and July, we'll also be involved with, if there's a livestock depredation, coordinating the investigation through Wildlife Services, which is the partner agency on the IFT that is responsible for conducting the livestock depredation investigations. We will work with the ranchers as far as taking management actions if we are having, experiencing repeated depredations in an area, and coordination pertaining to compensation. We also are doing our summertime predation study period investigation from June 15th through July 15th, so that we're able to capture wolf killing rates in the wintertime, as well as in the summertime, which would also capture predation on neonates, the very young elk and deer, and then also documenting pup survival, pup numbers, which is important to document reproduction, as well as recruitment of young pups in the population. Late summer, end of the fall, is the time where we are, our biologists are very busy with trapping, using leg hole traps designed to catch wolves. The traps are designed to have minimal impact on the wolves, they're padded jaws and they are rather safe. This is an effort for us to be able to start catching the pups that are born that year, as well as catching other animals, to place a working GPS collar on those animals. Again, going back to our key objectives, this greatly improves our ability to monitor the wolf population by having working GPS collars that use satellites to take points of where the animals are at, and then give, upload those points to computers where the biologist can pull up real-time information on these wolves. We continue to work with the livestock operators to work towards mitigating and minimizing wolf conflict avoidance, as far as working with, giving information to the producers as far as where these wolves are at, if we have wolves that are close to cattle, engaging in hazing of the wolves through less-than-lethal ammunition, which is rubber buckshot, rubber slugs that are shot out of a shotgun to hit the animal, but not cause permanent injury, but scare the animal away and create avoidance. We also will use diversionary food caches, where we will place road-killed elk and deer in specific areas to keep wolves out of the cattle. And then getting into November and December, this is the start of our end-of-year count, and so this is really the time when our biologists are documenting through November and December individual animals and numbers throughout the occupied area, as well as dispersing animals. This is also the time of year when the inter-agency field team leader for Arizona Game and Fish works with the field team leader for the Fish and Wildlife Service to come up with the initial release and translocation proposal for the upcoming year. And so that proposal, the initial release translocation proposal for 2017 was created at this time period in 2016, and for Arizona, going back to what I was talking about, cross-fostering. Cross-fostering was authorized in Arizona, initial release of these very young pups through cross-fostering, up to no more than six pups per year in Arizona, is what's allowed by our commission, and is what has been proposed for 2017. We're past that period now, two pups were cross-fostered in Arizona. As far as translocations in Arizona, a translocation is a taking a wild wolf or wolf pack and moving that wild wolf pack to another location. There are no proposed translocations in Arizona for 2017. And just a list of other year-round activities that the IFT engages in throughout the year that are not really seasonally oriented, the wolf livestock conflict avoidance, that is throughout the year. We will see periods in the wintertime where wolves would follow the elk up north off the forest onto private state land, where there would be cattle being grazed in those areas possibly, so again, working with the producers in those areas to give them information of the wolves, and working with them to reduce that conflict. Taking nuisance wolf reports and following up, investigating those, taking appropriate management action if necessary, that is very important to the Arizona Game and Fish Department. We're going to have wolves on the landscape, we need to be responsible, we need to be responsive and manage them with concern in regard to public safety and public concern as well. Following up on wolf sighting reports, we take wolf sighting reports throughout the year. We make it a point to visit with folks, if they're going to take the time to call us in Arizona on the Game and Fish Department, then they deserve a call back, and so that is important for us. Gives us a chance to visit with the public, be able to see what they're, hear from them what they're seeing, gives us good information, and also gives us a chance to visit with folks about the wolf reintroduction project. We do outreach events throughout the year across Arizona, it's a good chance to get out, provide factual information about Mexican wolves, and also provide information as to what the inter-agency field team does. And then also our training and certification, the biologists that work on the inter-agency field team are very capable, competent people, they've got college educations, they are required to go through training throughout the year to make sure that they're safe in helicopters and aircraft, as well as being safe with the animals that they're handling. Just an important note to make, as far as talking about information dissemination, one of the tools that we use for getting information out to the public, this is available to anybody, every other week, the inter-agency field team will conduct telemetry flights. So we will fly all of the area in Arizona and New Mexico where we have known wolves, listening for the VHF, the radio signals from the VHF collars, and then also taking the GPS collar points, take that information of where those wolves were located during that flight, and within that day or the next day, we will take that information and put it into a map that the public can access, that, this is a screenshot from an old map, but you can pull up that map and you can see the buffered locations of where each of the collared wolves was located. It also will, on the polygon, will say which wolf it was and which pack it belongs to, and the link at the bottom is the link that'll take you right to the most updated current location map. Something else that our inter-agency field team has done, before I go on to the monthly updates, is updates, is we have started calling the permatese that have cattle on the forest that have wished to be called after the flights and giving them wolf locations in a proactive way to get that information out to the livestock producers as far as where wolves were located after that flight. Briefly, our interagency field team produces a monthly wolf update. This is a public document given out to the public, the bold letters there is a way for anybody to click on that link and be able to go and sign up to receive this through an email sent out to the public. What's most important in this would probably be the pack updates that we give for each month, what updates on the pack, and it's fairly general information. We also talk about any of the investigations that were conducted by Wildlife Services regarding reported livestock depredation by wolves, talk about the findings, whether it was a wolf, confirmed wolf kill or whether it was coyotes or bears. And then also we report our nuisance behavior, any nuisance reports that we investigated and followed up on would be added to this monthly update. And then finally, just a list of contact information for the public especially as far as what they should do, phone numbers to call to report a possible wolf depredation. The sooner Wildlife Services can get out and investigate that calf, the more evidence they'll have to be able to look at if it's a calf or a horse or a cow. And then also to report nuisance wolf activity or a dead wolf, that number in red is our Arizona Game and Fish Department radio room, that's our dispatch center, it's answered 24/7. And then there's also a couple other phone numbers there for the different offices, probably of note to the board would be that traditionally, the IFT's been located in the Alpine Field Office. We have since moved, Arizona Game and Fish portion of the IFT is now located in Pine Top. We have an office on our Game and Fish Region 1 compound, and the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service is still in the Alpine office. We have one Arizona Game and Fish biologist still present in the Alpine office. So at that point, that's all I've got, appreciate the opportunity to visit. And I would turn it over to the board.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Greer. Gentlemen, do you have any questions or discussion?
I do, Chairman.
Okay, Mr. Shamley.
Yes, sir, thank you. Mr. Greer, Paul, I, recently there were sightings in Alpine, and actually, some of the pictures we were able to provide were county employees coming to work, took them. I want to thank you for your response to me on those sightings and beginning the hazing. Since you've been in the program, I've seen a definite increase in improvement in outreach, so I want to thank you publicly for that because there is some huge gaps in communications from the Game, Arizona Game and Fish Department and the public, and I think you are turning that around. But there are still some huge gaps that I get feedback from my constituents on continually. Most notably, many of our agricultural producers in the area, they could use more outreach on exactly what the protocols are, like this last slide, contact information that's available publicly. There's many sites that this can be posted around that the public are used to using in the towns. Eager posts all legal notices, so does NRCD, USDA, AFAS, FSA, at the Eager Post Office, for instance. So it's one thing to get an update, but the contact information the program needs to run on year-round needs to be more prevalent. Quite honestly, many of the constituents feel there's this gray zone about the program. And when we speak about social acceptance, the best way to get around that gray zone is just to be, I think, more engaging, and that's why I appreciate your folks coming today, too. Since we've lost the IFT meetings in Alpine, the last one was, what, 15, I believe, 2015? Is that correct, Chris?
I believe so.
There's been a huge gap, as is the unfortunate case here where we don't have one of the major agencies, the Forest Service, who's one of the lead agencies, an MOU, present. So you folks unfortunately have a larger burden to pick up as our state agency, and I do appreciate you attempting to do so.
Any other questions or discussion? Hearing none, Mr. Greer, thank you very much for your presentation, the people, also the staff that are with you. Okay, with that, gentlemen, let's go ahead and move on. Item number two, Mr. Wingard.
Yes, good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Would like to remove item number two from the agenda at this time.
Okay. With that, Mr. Chairman, we'll go ahead and get that out of the way. Okay, item number three, Mr. Wingard.
Yes, number three is the consent agenda. We have items A and B, and would recommend approval.
What are your wishes?
I make a motion we approve.
Motion to approve, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, I'm motioning a second to approve the particular item as presented. Are there any questions or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, it's unanimous, if we go ahead and do that. Okay, item number four. Mr. Shepherd, is that your item?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I'm a little bit, I guess, tired from last night and council, didn't adjourn until midnight last night, so I guess one is, just to kind of let my frustrations vent for a little bit, as you see the board packet, it has been brought forth, it doesn't have additional documents, and I do have for-year review, additional copies of what should have been attached to the job descriptions and as well as the restructuring. Do appreciate the time, Mr. Chairman, and Mr. Shamley. As you know, we basically came into this administration recently in January. Since then, it's given me some time to reevaluate and restructure my district in order to meet the needs of my constituents in District 2. I guess one of the things is that it's come to the point, at this point, now, several months ago, I wanted to present this to the board, just taking on the recommendations to hold off to this point, and certainly there may be some questions on the jumps, but I did provide as far as how the restructuring will be coming forth to move our two districts, so being District 2, we do have several sub-offices. And basically looking at the current budget that we have, I'm also making a recommend, asking for your approval for the staff that I've appointed in these higher positions. And again, as I've been saying that, you know, this is a new administration, thinking outside the box in what we're doing, I have come to the point where we're restructuring, and that's the recommendation I'm looking at right now. Certainly, I can hold off and say that we'll wait till the salary study, but, you know, just thinking that, you know, there are several times I've waited and sometimes we've missed the boat. And so something that I'd propose in and asking for your favorable approval on my administrative staff in District 2. So with that, Mr. Chair, I do have the job descriptions attached and also the recommended salaries at the range that I am recommending for my staff. Thank you.
Okay, gentlemen, what are your wishes? Is there a motion? Questions?
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion.
Okay, there's a motion to go with the particular item as presented, is there a Is there a second? Is there a second? Okay, for the lack of a second, the particular motion dies, Mr. Shepherd. And just by way of, I guess, a comment, Mr. Shepherd, we do have a salary study going on, I guess we probably should wait for that. I'd sure like to give some of my staff raises, too, you know, but I think we had said at the outset, you know, this administration, this current administration, we can go ahead and do a salary study and see what we can do to maybe bring some staff up, not only in District 2, but also District 1 and 3, and then here in St. John's. So I guess probably should wait on that. And we do need to be expeditious in bringing that around, Mr. Wingard. I don't know how far along we are with it and when we're proposing to get it done, we probably should get it done ASAP so we can address some of these concerns that are coming up relative to raises and staff reorganization. So with that, I don't know if there are any other comments.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Shepherd.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Again, I just think that we ought to respect one another as far as what we have in our budget, and this is something that we formulated within my budget, doesn't take anything away from District 1 or District 3. And so, you know, even if we do the salary study or whatever percentage is going to be recommended that I hear is coming down, it still fits within what I'm recommending. And even at that point, I will still be bringing that recommendation to the board. So either way, however the board wants to move forward with it, but I was hoping to, you know, gain your support, like I have supported your recommendations previously since January. And so, again, I do appreciate the comments.
Okay, I don't know if there are any other comments. Otherwise, hearing none, let's go ahead and move on, item number five.
Good morning, Dr. Shamley, members of the board.
Morning.
Discussion on possible approval to accept Amendment Number 2 to intergovernmental This will provide additional support for Apache County School Superintendent's role in development, coordination, and implementation of a peer-parent substance abuse prevention program. This is an ongoing grant.
Okay, gentlemen. What are your wishes?
I make a motion we approve.
Motion to approve, is there a second? Is there a second? Go ahead and second the motion, so we do have a live motion, gentlemen. Are there any questions or discussion? Mr. Shepherd.
Thank you again, Mr. Chair. I see all the school districts here in the northern part of Apache County, but however, I don't see a Gannato Unified School District. I don't know if there's a reason for that, or maybe can enlighten me on that question of why they're not part of this.
Yes, sir. Last year, each county had one school that was involved in the initiation of the program, and we use St. John's Middle School had a successful program there. Each of the other counties in the state did likewise. This year, the governor's office increased the budget for the county school superintendent's offices and expanded that to four different schools. The exact reason why Gannato was not included, I really am not sure. I know that Mr. Williams and I discussed wanting to get some up north. Chin Lee agreed, Windarock agreed. I had a smaller school in our county that said, "No, thank you," this year, this go round. Round Valley picked up on that and said, "Okay." St. John's is the hosting school, we'll have trainings here for those other schools will come down here. I suspect that in future years, this grant will continue, and we'll be able to expand, and Gannato will certainly be included in that. It includes 50 students, 7th graders, at each of these districts in those schools. So we're not addressing every 7th grader, but 50 at each of those schools, and they go through this program and get this training. It's really kind of a sweet little training that helps parents and students learn trigger points and learn how to communicate with each other. It's not too awfully in-depth, but it does teach them some good skills and help them. I'm not sure if I have a good answer for you, Mr. Shepherd, but we certainly will not leave Gannato out in the future.
Okay, gentlemen, are there any other questions or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, nay?
Oppose.
Okay, two in favor, one opposing, the item does pass. Item number six, Mr. Wingard.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, number six is discussion on possible approval of liquor license application recommendation. This is a transfer for Brandon Malloy of the Malloy's Public House, this is in Nutrioso at the address given there. We have not received any dissenting comments on this, and we'd recommend approval.
Okay, gentlemen, what are your wishes?
I make a motion we approve.
Okay, motion to approve, is there a second? Is there a second? Okay, I'll go ahead and second the motion, so we do have a live motion, are there any discussion or questions? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay, three in favor, none opposing, so with that, the item does unanimously pass. Okay, item number seven, Mr. Wingard.
Number seven is discussion on possible approval of the amended crooked-nail trail intergovernmental agreement between the town of Eager, town of Springerville, and Apache County for the construction of a public trail. The amendment reflects the removal of the city of St. John's from the agreement, and the reason this is happening is because the trail will not reach the city of St. John's at this point, at some point in the future it may, but for now it won't, so we need to amend the IGA, so would recommend approval.
Okay, gentlemen.
I make a motion we approve.
Okay, motion to approve, is there a second? Is there a second? Go ahead and second the motion, so we do have a live motion, questions, discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, it's unanimous, if we go ahead and do that. Okay, item number eight, human resources. Sir?
Mr. Chairman, members, the Human Resources Department requests possible approval, discussion on possible approval of the modification of the Human Resources Policy Manual, Section 3.2. As noted in your backup material, the purpose of this request is to adhere to Proposition 206, excuse me, the new law that increased the minimum wage also requires that we now pay all employees sick time, and that's what this does, and we recommend approval.
Okay, gentlemen.
I make a motion we approve, item number eight.
Okay, motion to approve, is there a second? Is there a second?
Second, questions.
Okay, motion, a second to approve the particular item as presented, Mr. Shepherd, question?
I might have missed it there, Mr. Joy, can you explain again as far as the request being recommended, is it from the state that you're saying?
This was Proposition 206 passed by the voters at the last election cycle, and it's the one that mandated both minimum wage, when we did that in January, to $10 an hour, but it also mandates that July 1st this year, we also pay the sick time for temporaries and part-time employees who are normally not benefits-eligible.
Okay, do you have a projected overall cost on impacts on that?
No, sir, other than the impact will be roughly 34 employees, and that's an average per year of those who will be receiving benefits that never did before.
Okay, are there any other questions or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Aye, it's unanimous, if we go ahead and do that. Item number nine. Aye. Go ahead and do that. Item number nine.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board.
Morning, sir.
Morning.
Emergency management request discussion and possible ratification of a resolution entering into Stage One Fire Restrictions effective June 16, 2017. The fire restriction is the result of continued drying conditions, lack of moisture, energy release components of the fine grass, deadened, down fuel load, and available resources to respond to a wildfire emergency. Just for the board's information, the southwest region is at preparedness level five, which is the highest preparedness level for a region. We had all of the incident management teams available in the southwest were on assignment. The southwest region has brought in a Type One team out of Colorado who now has an assignment and is prepositioned to Type One team in Cholo. They may be releasing that team, but the resources for fire are very limited right now due to the number of wildfires that are ongoing. With that, with all the science and documentation, I recommend ratification of the resolution entering into Stage One.
Okay, gentlemen.
I make a motion we approve the resolution entering into Stage One Restrictions.
Okay, motion to approve. Is there a second? Motion and a second to approve the particular item as presented. Are there any questions or discussion?
I have just...
Okay, Mr. Shambly.
Mr. Eager. Thank you. I know you know up there how dry it is on that side of that hill. I've been up there working quite a bit trying to prep for our beetle season and thinning. It's almost not wise to work. I just want that out in public. I know that's kind of the opposite of my normal tone, but quite frankly, even up camping, I made a personal choice camping and to be closer to work, to not have campfires. The Forest Service did the best they could, running around with little slips of paper, telling people that the area is red flagged. But I think we both know when most of the mountain has no signal that doesn't let us convey it. I couldn't tell anybody. So I'm greatly concerned about the influxes of public that comes up like that Greer Days weekend. Red flagged, and there wasn't really a lot of agency outreach, because I was at Greer Days. You know, they're saying, "Please, folks, you're flooding us, and you all want to roast marshmallows. Let's not roast the mountain." So I appreciate the county at least being more proactive.
Okay. Are there any other questions or discussion? Mr. Shepherd?
Thank you. Mr. Chief Deputy, basically, my understanding is the resolution is regarding Stage One restriction and going forward, and just understanding that this is a, to address the severe temperature and extreme fire dangers that we have here. I guess in preparedness, I do want to say thank you for taking the steps to be prepared and understanding that limited resources are always going to be there at times like this. So how long, how long will this pretty much be in effect? I guess, is this just here that we're looking at the summer, just that one area, or are you looking throughout, are we supporting throughout the whole county?
What we have, Supervisor Shepherd, Mr. Chairman, is the resolution is to cover all county lands, not under a tribal jurisdiction. So the tribe would have their own restrictions that would have to come out from their emergency management, is my understanding. We have the resolution will be posted. Right now, we have possibility of dry lightning and some very light moisture possible through today, and continued high temperatures, near record temperatures for the rest of the week. It's looking like, according to the National Weather Service, the monsonal moisture will be moving into the area as is normal, so hopefully around the first part of July. So once the, once the conditions are lessened, once the ERCs, the energy release components of these fuels goes down, then we can release those restrictions. Did that answer your question, sir?
Thank you. I guess my next point is, and just what your comment was about the Navajo Nation having Department of Emergency Management, how proactive is the sheriff's office, you making sure that, you know, we're not, we're not just saying we're going to take care of our own, you know. Apache County, I remember, runs all the way up to the Utah State line. And so those efforts need to be coordinated. I don't know if you have some update on how we're going to initiate part of this, you know. You just mentioned that just county lands, but I'm hoping that, you know, the services go throughout the whole Apache County. The reason why I'm bringing this up too is that, I don't know, maybe something I need to sit down with you in the sheriff's office. Sheriff is that, you know, a lot of visibility of the sheriff's deputies are very, very limited. Only time I see them is, you know, sitting at a construction zone, and I don't think that's really, really doing public safety. And so I don't know if there's, because the reason why I'm bringing this up is my first year, and every year, the sheriff's office goes over about $400,000 in the red. And so, and I understand that there's overtime issues that aren't budgeted, but it's a responsibility to sheriff to, I guess, look at that too. So I'm hoping that we would continue to not say, you know, north or south, county, non-county. And certainly, I'd like to see the initiative to be, to be brought forward, you know, not just talk about it, but do it. That's what I'm asking.
Yes, sir. Excuse me. Also, Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Shepherd, we do work hand-in-hand with Navajo Nation Emergency Management, with Harlan, who's the interim emergency manager right now. So he is at all of our meetings. We are in constant contact, and we are working with them. And as far as, as far as the visibility up there, I will check on that and make sure, you know, what the limited resources we have, what they are doing. I can let you know that on the road construction, those deputies are off-duty, being paid by a construction company. So that's not technically, at that point, a county resource. The county gets reimbursed for the vehicle expense. So those are the off-duty guys that are employed by the construction agency.
Okay. I might put forward the comment that I, you know, I'm very appreciative when the sheriff comes forward during the times when the Navajo Nation declares an emergency. And usually, how that happens is the Apache County government also declares an emergency. And in an emergency situation, my experience has been that every agency that is on in Apache County, whether it's a tribe, or US government, or state government, county government, they all get, they all get involved. And I do appreciate that, chief, you know, you and the sheriff. And I guess we continue in like fashion. So, okay, with that, gentlemen, are there, if there are no other questions or discussion, all those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Go ahead and do that. Item number 10, sir.
Sheriff's Office, excuse me. Sheriff's Office requests discussion and possible approval to enter into an intergovernmental agreement with Arizona Department of Public Safety regarding testing and implementation of a new criminal justice information system for the Apache County Regional Dispatch Center. This has been worked through with Commander Spivey and our dispatch supervisor, Mr. Jones. And going into this new system will save us about $4,800 a year, plus improve the service that we have to those that, all those that we dispatch for, and we would recommend approval.
Ladies and gentlemen, what are your wishes?
I make a motion we approve. I have just a couple of questions.
Okay, is there a second?
Second question.
Okay, motion and a second to approve the particular item as presented. Mr. Shambly, question?
Yes, sir. Chief Eager, it's very helpful before these agendas if I can get direct input from the person doing the agenda item. So let's talk afterwards for sure, because I do have some questions internally about the item. I support the move. It saves money. It's a better system, I've been told, but I did have to find out all that secondhand. So...
Yes, sir.
Okay, Mr. Shepherd?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Again, my advocacy is going to be for District Two. You're entering in agreement with DPS and doing such and dispatching, but as far as dispatching, how does that benefit my area as well?
It's the information system. So if one of the deputies, one of the fire departments, one of the EMS companies that we dispatch for request information, this improves the information flow. This will allow, we're working toward allowing each individual law enforcement entity deputy to be able to access the information system via computer, which mobile data terminals, which most agencies already use. So we're working toward that end. This is just one of the steps to get us there, and that helps to increase the amount of information that we have there on the roadside on who we're dealing with and what we're dealing with. So it improves public safety wherever law enforcement is at.
Okay. Gentlemen, are there any other questions or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, nay? Okay, two in favor, one opposing. The particular item does pass. Item number 11, sir.
Sheriff's Office requests discussion and possible approval of the Arizona Criminal Justice Agreement DC 18001 in the amount of $225,276 to fund the Apache County Special Crimes Enforcement Team for fiscal year 18. The grant requires $56,319 match. This is the burn jag funding that we've received for 20-plus years to fund our drug task force, which is very successful throughout the county, and we would recommend approval.
Okay, gentlemen. What are your wishes?
I make a motion. Questions?
Okay, motion and a second to approve the particular item as presented. Mr. Shambly, questions?
Same issue. I really need the input up front, because I get questions once this is published for my whole constituency, and it's hard to answer those effectively when I haven't heard from the people presenting.
I'm sorry about that. I thought that we had got that to you. I apologize. My bad.
Okay, Mr. Shepherd?
Thank you. In particular, to our match, where's that funding coming from?
The match comes from RICO funds, and that, to my knowledge, that's where we match the 59, or the 56, 319.
And, Mr. Chair, if I may, what is the balance in the RICO fund?
You know the balance? I'm not sure what the balance is in the, I didn't bring those figures, but I can send you the balance in the different RICO accounts.
Okay, gentlemen. I don't know if there are any other questions, discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Go ahead and do that. Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Okay, item number 12.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board.
Morning.
Morning.
We are asking to, for a discussion and possible extension of the contract with Ms. Judy Bender for the fiscal year 2018.
Okay, gentlemen.
Make a motion, have questions.
Okay, motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second question.
Okay, motion and a second to approve the particular item as presented. Mr. Shambly, questions?
Yes, sir. Steve, thank you. Hey, I understand Ms. Bender's been very helpful in the department. What are we, I was under the impression from staff maybe five months ago that she would be retiring. So now there's an extension for a year. I get it, and I understand she's stellar in what she does. Why the change?
Well, um...
Is there a workload issue, or?
No, it's, it's more of a decision. I mean, she's really typically already retired from Coganino County. So as a contractor, she's just working for us 30 hours a week and no one else. So I don't know if it was a change of mind. I don't know if it was a change of heart. It's always been kind of one of those things where I just, we come down to it. If she's more than welcome, she's given not only the, only the assessors office extreme help, but other offices around the county as well.
Yeah.
So we've just, you know, any chance that we have to take advantage of her expertise and her knowledge, I'm more than happy to stand up and recommend that we take it.
And, and from what I've heard, that I agree with that, assessment of Ms. Bender's abilities. Is there a workload in your department that makes you so gung-ho?
At the moment in time, we're just trying to accomplish so many tasks.
Okay.
That were so, they were put off to the side for so many years. Obviously, we have our normal everyday tasks that we must statutorily get through every year. We decided to go through and do a lot of the auditing of records, old records that haven't been touched for 20 years, 20, 30 years sometimes. So she's, she's, she's helping with the project management side, the training side, just the organizational operation of trying to get so much work done in such a little amount of time. There's not a 10-year plan, and we were, we were looking at a 24-month plan originally. Obviously, that was kind of where that five months came into it. As that kind of started to end in the air, we knew there was no way that we could get our goals.
When there's residents of our county, wherever they might be, that have an issue maybe with their assessment, is there extra efforts and work with your department and in your department going to help speed up some of these complaint resolution process?
Yeah, we've obviously been working on it day in, day out. So it's one of my main concerns, especially when I took over the office. So we've started by, you know, just communicating, just opening up lines of communication with, with the public any way we possibly could. Now we're trying to get to a point to where the data is better, the assessments are cleaner, more transparent, out in front of everyone. So there isn't those questions that come up. There isn't questions of inequity, inequitability, which has plagued this county for a long time.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Chairman.
Mr. Shepherd? Thank you. I guess my question is, why the extension? Knowing to say that, you know, we're extending for another year, but, you know, just to be fair with everybody, you know, why can't we advertise is one. The other is, could save the county some money, you know, as far as, what is it, the rate of $50, up to another amount. I can't remember what it was, but it doesn't give me any, you know, it doesn't show me what basically where our objectives are in trying to accomplish. She's just kind of highlighting here, but I guess in a contract, I guess I'm looking for what should be attained and achievable at certain, you know, like a quarterly base. So, but again, my question is, why the extension and the possibility of going to advertisement?
The extension, Ms. Bender contains a certain knowledge base that is not anywhere in the state. She not only can, is an assessment administrator, but she also can work with GIS. She can work with the Treasurers Department. She's worked with agencies throughout the entire state. For someone of her caliber to hire would be, to advertise for, there's no advertising for her, for her position. Her position would be someone you go out and you recruit and you get. As far as signing another contract with her... As far as signing another contract with her, she's, this is what she prefers, to go year in, go out as a contractor. And again, if we can possibly keep her for another year, it's a benefit to the entire county, not just to the Assessors' Office, which she does a lot of work for us, but she also does a lot of work for the Treasurer's Office, having an engineering, for any department that ever has called, any constituent that's ever called, she's been there to help anyone else out. The information that is contained within her contract and within our budgets over the last couple of years, our plans that are with her going along, trying to accomplish the tasks that we have in front of us. Hope that answers your question, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chair.
Shepherd?
Kind of a bit confused, you said that about the advertising, just based on the credentials, there's no need to advertise. But I'm, I'm saying that, you know, we're, we're about equity here. You know, if there's a position or something that can be contracted out and bid it out, you know, some of us are held to that standard as well. And so I'm just hoping that we across the county are in, in compliance with that, you know, request for proposals. I mean, I mean, that's, if you got contractors that are, can be given those bids, then I think it's fair to do that. And again, I just feel like, you know, no disrespect to anybody if they got the credentials, yes, but as far as our policies, procedures, and moving forward, I would maybe highly recommend that we continue to do that, because some of us are, are, are put in that boat to say that you're not doing it. And certainly, that, that's where I'm coming from. Thank you.
I apologize. The Assessors' Office unfortunately is, well, unfortunately for the public, is required to be licensed. All the appraisers are required to go through schooling to be licensed by the Department of Revenue. So we've kind of put a couple of things together, it's hard for us to attract people, hire people. We've, we've gone out and tried to hire, let's say, like, level-one appraisers, very difficult to find in this county, very difficult to find in Navajo, I mean, lots of people have a problem with it. Now, on the other hand, we, so basically what we have to do is build them up from the bottom, start with apprentice appraisers and kind of build them up. What Judy Bender has is qualifications that are not really, there's only four or five people in this county that have them. That includes a couple that are working for other counties right now. So I, I mean, I do agree with you on that situation, I'm more than happy to work through that process, and I do understand with the, with the bidding process. Trying to find someone with her expertise to come and work for the county is very difficult, and that's why I say we're lucky to have her with us.
Mr. Chair, just like to document that for the record, that some of us do comply with that, but if we can continue to keep that consistent throughout the county, we'd appreciate it.
Okay, are there any other questions or discussion? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, nay?
Aye.
Two in favor, one opposing, the item does pass. Thank you, sir. Okay, item number thirteen. Mr. Young?
Yes, thank you, Chairman. The county attorney's office is seeking approval of the Arizona Criminal Justice Commission Victim Compensation Grant. This grant is in the amount of eighty-two thousand, five hundred dollars, it requires no match, and it provides funds for grant vic, or, excuse me, victims of crimes to help them stay on their feet in response to, obviously, things they have no control over.
What are your wishes? Is there a motion? If there's, if there's no motion, do we just move on? Is that what we do?
On item fourteen, your honor, Chairman, the county attorney's office is seeking discussion and possible approval of the Arizona Criminal Justice Commission's Drug, Gang, and Violent Crime Control Program Grant. This grant is designed to combat violent crime throughout the county. It provides sixty-two thousand dollars and two-hundred, sixty-two thousand, two-hundred-and-ninety-eight dollars with a twenty-thousand-dollar match. These are ongoing grants that are essential to the county attorney's office, and we would request approval.
Ladies and gentlemen, what are your wishes? Same old, same old. Mr. Shamley?
I make a motion, we approve. I have a couple of questions.
Okay, motion to approve the particular item? Is there a second? Is there a second? I'll go ahead and second the motion, gentlemen, so we do have a live motion. Mr. Shamley, questions?
Mr. Young, you had mentioned how critical this is to the operations. To help myself and the public better understand what this even does, or where the matches come from, or any of that, could you please explain that?
Yeah, this helps provide salary and overhead for violent crime prosecution. So it relates to both, to murders, assaults, aggravated assaults, and those types of crimes. In terms of the match, the match amount is also provided, salary-based matches, so any salary that we've got in...
Pull over for a second.
Oh, sorry.
You can't. Pull over just a second, someone.
But that, that is the, that's where the match comes from.
Okay. So it's like in-kind or something?
Yes, yeah.
Okay. I was confused a bit on that salary-based, okay, so in-kind matches. Okay.
Okay. Are there any other questions or discussion?
Question.
Mr. Shepherd, question?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Again, this is consistence. Reason why, I guess, is the previous, I didn't have the data in, in front of me for, for the grant, and my district is District Two. Same thing goes with this grant. How does it benefit and, it will be utilized in a portion, portion of this, I guess, to benefit District Two.
Okay, Mr. Young?
Yeah, and both this and the previous grant are county-wide. In fact, the, the grant, the Victims Comp Grant, I think, is highly used in District Two and the northern part of the county. And District, or this Violent Crime Control Program Grant also affects the entire county. Obviously, in some ways, it's related to jurisdiction, and the county attorney's office does have jurisdiction in District One and Two, but a little bit less, and some of the jurisdiction we have, we cede to the Navajo Department of Justice. But we do still prosecute crimes that occur in District Two, and, and this goes to those prosecutors as well.
Mr. Chair.
Okay, Mr. Shepherd?
Thank you. Mr. Young, thank you for that. Again, you know, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna accept, I guess, saying that we're limited by jurisdiction. You've got a sheriff's office that has MOU and IGA, and I'm, and if we're actually going to really benefit our constituents across throughout the Apache County as voters, you know, I think, again, I always say that, you know, government's form to serve its constituents and its people, and be that it may, might be under Navajo reservation, and we might have census numbers, but again, we, we vote for particular elected officials to be in office to advocate for everybody across to, to the state line. And so I'm hoping, I was hoping to hear that this part of, what, what portion of sixty-two thousand dollars will be, you know, going towards that assistance, and/or for my vote to be supportive, because, you know, I think a lot of times we just end up stopping just because, you know, we, we, we don't think outside the box or pursue these type of things, and it's long, 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 long overdue. And I'm hoping that we would change that culture in, in moving forward. So I do hope that I would see some numbers as to, to this, and I think that's a position I'll continue to save for the next three and a half years, as long as I'm here, so.
And I can't say, in response to that, two-thirds of the grant amount goes to prosecutor assigned to the Chinley and Puerto justice courts. So the large portion, the majority of the portion of this grant actually does go to fund prosecution for those districts, for those justice courts.
Okay, are there any other questions or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, nay?
Nay.
Two in favor, one opposing, the item does pass. Mr., item number fifteen, sir?
Thank you, Chairman. Following a possible executive session for legal advice pursuant to ARS 3843103A3, discussion and possible approval to authorize the Arizona Attorney General's Office to make an offer of judgment to Transwestern Pipeline regarding litigation in two tax cases we have. As a little background, Transwestern Pipeline has sued us now, and, and by us, it's actually a lawsuit directed towards the state who does the tax valuations on these large properties. We call them centrally-valued properties. They're not done through our Assessors' Office, but through the State Department of Revenue. And Transwestern, for three years now, three years running, has sued us based on the valuations. So for two thousand and fifteen, that had been settled, if you recall, and is all done with. But two thousand and sixteen and two thousand and seventeen remain outstanding and are actually getting merged into one case. Based on some good things that happened for, for us, I say us, and that means the state and the several counties that are the defendants in this case, we have a plan for negotiations, and this item is to request authorization to the Attorney General's Office, who's representing us in these cases, to negotiate on our behalf to a certain amount. And I will leave it at that for now, to decide if we want to go into executive session. Of course, that's a board decision, and not necessarily, not, but I guess I'd leave that to the board to decide whether we should go into executive session or not.
Okay, what, what is your recommendation, Mr. Young?
There are some sensitive numbers, or potentially sensitive, settlement numbers, that I would recommend going into executive session, but most everything is public, public information, so I don't think it's that strong, but my recommendation would be executive session.
Okay, with that, gentlemen, what are your wishes? Gentlemen?
Mr. Chairman, just for clarification.
Shepherd?
Mr. Young, you said this is all public knowledge, but you're recommending executive session for numbers on something that has already been settled?
No, the two thousand and fifteen case was settled, and I only bring that up as kind of evidence of how it can go. In the two thousand and fifteen case, the county ended up returning a few hundred thousand dollars. That came from the county and several special districts and, and school districts, primarily through Gannato and, and that region. The Gannato Fire District, School District, and the county were the top-three taxing districts to pay. So the two thousand and fifteen case was settled, the two thousand and sixteen and two thousand and seventeen cases have not yet settled, and that's the, where there may be some numbers that we may want to keep confidential for the purposes of settlement But I, I think the lawsuit itself, the litigation is public knowledge, but the numbers are still part of, subject to negotiation.
Chairman?
Mr. Shamley?
Mr. Young, if we ask questions of you right now about the settlement for sixteen and seventeen, can you just abstain or tell us when it's a sensitive number?
I can.
Okay. Chairman, may I ask a question?
Mr. Shamley?
You mentioned that there were several hundred thousand in the fifteen settlement that was paid out. Can, you said like the county, Gannato, and that region.
Mm-hmm.
Oh, what, is there a projection for sixteen and seventeen?
Yes, and that's where the good news comes into play. Right now, Transwestern has paid for their two thousand and sixteen taxes already.
Okay.
And their two thousand and seventeen taxes are now, have been sent out. There was a correction made based on new information that we have, where they owed more money than previously thought for two thousand and sixteen and two thousand and seventeen. So there was the original tax bill for two thousand and sixteen, the original tax bill for two thousand and seventeen, and tax rule corrections for both of those years where they would pay us more money. So with that as a baseline, the proposed settlement would include us not having to pay back any money. It would range anywhere from leaving it as-is for two thousand and sixteen, two thousand and seventeen, the original tax bills, and not getting the extra that we, the tax rule corrections that we sent out, to getting some of the tax rule correction back. So two thousand and sixteen, as I mentioned, the expectation right now, and these cases aren't done, so I could be wrong, but the expectation is we won't have to return anything that's been paid so far.
But we may waive a corrected higher amount.
We may, and that's what I'm asking the board today, is to give authority to the Attorney General to negotiate using that corrected amount. So the idea is that we wouldn't have to pay anything back, but we, the Attorney General's Office would use those corrected amounts as negotiating leverage. And so that would be the range of the negotiation.
Okay.
Okay, gentlemen? What are your wishes?
I, I make a motion that we approve. I feel more comfortable after Mr. Young's explanation.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, a motion and a second to approve, given the authorization to the Arizona Attorney General to make an offer, I guess.
That's right.
Okay. Is there any other discussion or questions? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, it's unanimous that we go ahead and do that. So with that, we're pretty much going with the gamut. I, I didn't get no notification on item number seventeen. Mr. Wangert, number sixteen?
Mr. Chairman, we need to remove number sixteen from the agenda. This meeting has been, the location has been changed, still is at the same time, but we'll be sending out a notification this afternoon of the new location for this meeting.
Okay, with that, the chair, only intended motion to adjourn the board meeting?
Motion. Second.
Okay, motion and a second to adjourn, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. It's unanimous that we go ahead and do this. So with that, the county board of supervisors hereby adjourned.